Remember how to do it? Good evening, I'd like to call the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Hamlin Board Selectment Order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're holding this meeting in the Board Selectment Office at the Hamlin Town Hall. We are also broadcasting over Zoom and recording the meeting. Is there anyone else recording the meeting? Dalton, okay. All right, first order of business. Lauren, do we have any minutes?
We do not.
Okay then. Second order of business, we're going to introduce some new people.
And Ben Trud is here.
I know. We're going to start with the Park and Rec we have with us, Kerry Joseph, the Park and Rec Chairman.
Yes, we brought Dan Lantner and hired him as our new Park and Rec Director.
Yep, nice to meet you all.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you again.
Yes, yeah, you too, you too. Looking forward to it, excited about working for the Park and Rec and taking, getting some new programs installed. And, you know, working with, getting us updated, communicating with the town, outreach with the town, things like that.
Okay. What, when is your first start?
The twenty-fifth Monday, a week from today.
Great.
So Dan, did you just show up at the park? You got some experience or what?
Well, so it's interesting, it's an interesting story really. I left my job in finance about five years ago. And at the time, I actually filled in and worked for the rec department when somebody had moved away over to the Conservation Commission. I stepped in and worked for the park. I've been a youth basketball coach in town for the last ten years or so, coaching my boys that have gone through the program. So I kind of have a unique perspective of working here, having kids that went through the program and coaching in town as well. So I've lived here for about twelve years. So love the town.
Welcome aboard. I think there's a lot of things going on. Kerry's got a lot going on, so you'll be, you'll be busy.
I'm going to be busy. I'm looking forward to it.
Ball's going to be fun, right?
That's right.
Come back with the fall festival. How is that going along, Kerry?
It's going, coming along very well.
Yeah? Anything, anything you need from us to help or?
I might need some flyers project, that's about it.
And how can people donate?
Flyers.
I like, have to go through Ra. They can send a check to Ra and go through that. If you want to do a trunk, contact me and I'll add you to the list. Will you be joining us this year for the trunks or?
I'm in.
All right, good.
And what's the date again?
October twenty-first.
Okay, at?
TWB.
All right, for the huge audience on Zoom, I want to make sure everybody knows.
Yeah, there's the craft fair, there's the Menachalk High School Band will be performing, the local Dune Studio will be performing. We have, we're in combination with the Police Safety Night now. So we have fireworks, they're trying to do, get some other things going too and it should be a good time.
Great. Look forward. If you need anything, please reach out to us.
Absolutely.
I'll expect, I'll expect the flyer.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate that.
All right, Dan, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much, happy to be here.
Welcome aboard, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, and also introductions, formally introduced Lauren McCormick, who was our new administrative assistant. And has been on board for.
One day.
Well, officially one day, but she did start in last week.
Yes.
Well-trained by Pam and we certainly wish Pam Courtney the best in her retirement. So Lauren, do you have a few words you'd like to say or?
Nothing I can say at the moment.
Come on, you typed the agenda, you knew you were on it.
I appreciate the opportunity and I'm glad to be here.
Okay.
So she's our new Emily. The devil wears pride, I see everybody Emily.
Never saw it, sorry. I haven't got time for movies, Don. Jeez, thanks.
Well, when you're retired, you get to see, you get to see a lot of them.
Those ones that usually are at two AM?
Two AM, yeah, exactly.
When you're sending emails.
Price is half price. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next on the agenda, we're going to review the warrants which we put off last week because we were having such a good time with other things.
I'll put it up there.
Bob, thanks for the update. As everyone's aware, we are having a special town meeting on October thirtieth at seven o'clock at Barton Burgess Middle School.
Before, while we're on the warrant, okay, I want to bring to everyone's attention again, as I've sent a couple of emails on it, that the last town meeting May eighth, two thousand twenty-three, warrant article fifteen and sixteen are posted on the clerk's website incorrectly. They were both defeated.
Right.
And she corrected one, but the other one has not been corrected yet on the public website.
Okay, did you speak to Eva about it again?
I've sent her several emails, she hasn't responded.
She was just here, but, okay. Bob, if you could verify with Eva tomorrow, see if she can get that correction done. Thank you.
And the other thing I want to bring up, well, before we get started on this is that, on the annual town meeting, we had nine kind of extraneous articles for funding different things. And on this one here, we've got fourteen, October fourteen. So I think if the idea of the special town meeting is to kind of clean up the paperwork, I think we're going a little bit off track there from time to time.
Okay, I think you're right, but we did make a point, some of these funding ones were ones that were brought up at the annual saying, well, heads up, we're going to come back in the, in the fall. Fibroptic was one, Senior Center, Master Plan, I think. So, which I don't actually see on here.
I don't, I don't have it on there.
Well, they did vote to put it on at the last meeting.
Okay.
Check that. Okay, so let's.
Which, you know, if they did, that brings up the point of time, but there's one other thing that was recorded wrong, was that the article was approved, well, a report was approved, but the article was defeated. And I don't know what the credibility is there, if someone's looking, what did that happen the last time, if we're bringing it up again, you know?
I think we, I think the point was that there was a medical thing at the time and really didn't have the staff there doing it properly. But thank you for bringing it to our attention, hopefully can get corrected.
So I, I haven't had a communication from them, but we're going to put seventy-five on?
That would be what they need, the, the high, the bidder they like held the price from the previous quote.
The high bidder.
There can only one with the complete proposal, yeah. I did suggest that if they're looking for that type of funding, it would be, I think, it would be good for them to actually have.
Excuse me, John, did they want seventy-five or fifty-seven? Was it fifty-seven, five?
It's like sixty-seven.
Was it one thirty-four, five?
Yeah, the exact number, in their motion. So, but it would help their case if they actually presented some of what the bidder brought in.
Yeah.
Their slide presentation was extremely, extremely productive. Okay. So.
As far as the funding goes, like Don says, I'm glad Dick's here now, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the funding for the fiber program is not actual a dollar amount funding. We're looking to borrowing anticipation, which I believe wouldn't happen until the end of the project, but we just need the approval from the treasurer to keep that, keep that running. Am I correct in saying it that way?
It's similar to, the last time we went through the process was the police station. Nothing goes on the tax rate immediately, but we're obviously binding ourselves to this project. I'm not sure if there has to be a high, a top number on that or not. I want to go back and look at the police station thing, I think there is. It's just that the, the harm, like, just like the high school, the only thing we'd be doing is bond anticipation notes. And then when we're, the project's all done, which three to five years maybe, then we would bond for the whole thing and then we would start showing up on the tax rate.
Well, we need a warrant article to give authority to borrow, basically.
Oh, absolutely.
I have a question. I know the DOR is occasionally permitting thirty-year bonds. Do you think this would qualify?
I do not know if it would qualify. I wonder about borrowing for a piece of technology for thirty years.
I, I would think with, as you talked before, and we'll get into this in more depth, but with the potential to service the bond with revenue, I would imagine we'd want to go out thirty years anyhow.
Right, I think that the goal is to have it all paid for by the revenue of the service by the time it wraps up.
Right, right. I mean, with the first initial thing, you're going to be hopefully having.
This is why we've been bringing it up at every town meeting the last two years, just to get the, the knowledge out there.
You said before, the first zone is hopefully the highest take rate, which technically would start bringing revenue in right away.
Right away.
Right, no. Okay, let's start. Article one, funding for the Senior Center Building Committee. At this point, we did get three responses to the request for an RFQ. Two had monetary amounts, the third one did not. They prefer to get the award and then tell you how much they want for it, which is a great way to do business. I'm sure I'd like to buy that car and then you tell me how much I'm paying you for the car. The board, the committee, Dwayne and Gary did respond back to them saying that we really didn't feel it was a good, good model. And they're, at this point, going through, we will have a meeting next week and go through the two bidders that came up.
So do we have any, any rough numbers there?
Not at this point, no. There's still some qualifying parts of their thing, phase one, phase two, alternate, stuff like that. Certainly, it's not over six figures, it's still well under a hundred. So, and for the RFQ, when Kerry talked about, you could potentially see ten to twenty percent of your projected building price in the RFQ. That's pretty good. Because we were looking at a two or three million dollar building and if the RFQ is under a hundred, that's pretty good. Funding for Fibroptic, you pretty much covered that.
You just covered that, yes, I didn't mean to jump the gun.
No, no, authority to borrow is what we're looking at.
How much do you think we're going to have to borrow?
We don't.
Well, the, the complete project is eight point five million. But, you know, at a fifty percent take rate was what we're shooting for, the money we'd be making revenue at the end of the year, if we were to achieve that throughout the year. So that's the, my, the way I'm envisioning it, I think Dick and I talked about it, you're probably going to start here and come up here with the revenues and then hopefully surpass and, you know, cover the debt.
Start servicing the debt on it, yeah. Additional funding for town administrator account, Bob, you made the point that down the road, if there's a change, we're going to be more competitive and potential influx into that, so.
I, I can give you the survey, actually, that was done by Nick and, and Wilbraham, of salaries in the region for equivalent positions, sometimes larger towns, but so you can see basically what, what is considered competitive now.
And I did mention before that, that counselor from Springfield, I can't recall his name.
Sean Curran.
Sean Curran, got the job as administrator for two towns for eighty thousand.
Yes.
So, I'm sure it's above and below and there's, there's a range.
Yes. He had like three roles too. He's the on the council administrator and does something else.
He's running for reelection.
The three different things.
But he's one of the few not running for mayor, right?
That's right.
Dick, I think we've got to change the wording on that. Because it says, available funds, some money to increase the salary for the town administrator. It sounds like we're increasing the town administrator's salary. Is there another way we can word it to?
I think so too, and also, there's a couple of these, that brings up a good point. This article, Article four, Article six, we should be referencing the line item.
Right.
The account number, okay.
Is there appropriation to the line item?
Right, right.
That's the way.
Yeah, I was going to do that in the, in, in the motions.
I do in the actual thing as well, yeah.
So I mean, just, when I read it, I say, you know, they're going to say, well, he's getting seventy-nine, we're going to give one hundred and fifty.
And I did.
Above the table.
I, I did receive an email, which I think you did as well, questioning why we wait until the motion at the town meeting to let the public know how much, how much is being requested.
Well, in the past, we've also issued a explanation one. You know, I think that's a good idea to make sure that's out there as well, with the projected number.
Yeah, so.
It'll be out there, yeah. Well, the same thing is true for emergency notification system, and I don't think that's how we want to word it. Your increased funding for that line item, the explanation is that the soft, you know, our annual cost went up.
Inflation.
Right.
How much is it? How much is it going to be?
Around four thousand.
Can't we?
Four thousand? It went up, that, I know we have the change, but it was because of the initial part.
It was the installation.
So your, it's actually increased funding for the emergency management line item, due to an increase in cost for the emergency management software.
Can't we, can't we, can't we take, take it, divide it up amongst the departments?
Well, we found the whole thing. It's one line, it's one line item.
But we can't, we can't take five hundred from the police and five hundred from fire and a thousand from us and five hundred from somebody else because we send messages out for everybody. You know, five hundred from the clerk or, I don't know.
Because we all put that much extra money in our budgets.
Well, that's good, I'm glad you did that.
That was sarcasm, Dick, I do that.
I know that may not come across on the recording, but yeah. You're asking me, you're asking.
Put that in the minutes.
You ask people to budget conservatively and then, yeah.
Put that in the minutes. Sarcastically, Dick said.
Well, we have, how much do we have on our expense account? Fifteen thousand?
Fifteen, twenty-five.
What do we have in townhouse maintenance?
Do we ever, do we ever spend that?
No, no.
Townhouse maintenance, I think.
Yeah, we spent that.
And we can't transfer until May any of it.
There's always something.
I'm just saying.
So now we'll be wicked overdue, yeah.
I'm trying to eliminate things from the.
Slightly salaries?
That's, I'd be happy to kick in my seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
You want to call home on that first?
She doesn't see that, Chuck.
Now it's out in the open.
Strike that from the record.
No, yeah, don't print that, Dalton, thank you. CPA projects, talking to Doug, he's got a couple of, I think he mentioned housing, a couple of things with Connie as well. I think we've heard about that, wants to get the work done, I believe around Academy Hall. Remember she talked about those things in the back, yeah.
What is housing, what, what did you say?
Not yet, but we'll have it at our meeting.
That's new, isn't it?
I do expect something back.
Spigots or something like that.
Did they just do spigots?
That was something, yeah.
Do we expect something back from the Cemetery Commission, a request?
Probably not.
I think we pretty much went as far as we could for that.
Asked them and put it out there and they didn't seem interested.
Yeah, so. Animal control or where that, the boarding.
Can't we, can't we just do it?
I mean, I guess.
Can we do what?
Cemetery Commission, I mean, we're concerned about the cemeteries, I mean, can't we?
Pretty intrusive.
What?
Pretty intrusive that we're like, you know, pouring money, they would be administering it, I mean, it's their land.
Well.
I think I'll reach again as.
You know I have an issue there, so.
I know you do.
Okay.
All right, I think, Bob, maybe you could bring it up again at the next staff meeting to them or reach out to, I guess it's him at this point. And we stand at the ready, actually.
Just to attend the staff meetings?
I don't, reach out to him, but we're going to have a CPA meeting.
No, but I'll get to them.
And one of the members of the committee is on the CPA board, so, well, Doug. We're aware of the land trust project, which is the second half.
Let's go back to Article six, the animal control account.
That was the boarding fee.
Are we going to put the beaver stuff in there? So.
Yeah.
Can we have a quote?
We don't have a quote, we don't have a firm quote.
So last I talked to Finn, he was waiting to hear back from the Beaver Solutions people. He sent the request, but um.
And we're looking.
I don't think it was going to be huge.
Three thousand plus, four thousand for a deceiver.
And then Mark was talking, the one, Glendale, I think, is, he's going to hold off until trapping season, so it's cheaper.
Yeah, he's had good luck with the landowner up there too, so crossing and getting into it, you know.
So that could be what, five thousand?
Between the boarding and.
Between the boarding and.
Not huge. Land Trust, we're aware of, this is the second half, as we heard from, I believe it was Jennifer, our last meeting. It's the land on Hickory that, remember Tony from fellow streetmart?
If, once we get.
Yeah.
Once we get a sense of where, where we are here, I will do the motions and I'll get a number from Shelley that she thinks will suffice. I think it's six to eight hundred dollars that she needs.
Probably should round up on what's going on for the rest of the year.
Been about. The land trust money's not, no money though.
No money with that, no. And highway tractor, now this is kind of a.
That says fifty-nine thousand dollars.
That's nearby, we're not paying.
We're not paying, okay.
Highway tractor, so this goes, you know, we do talk about emergency in the, in the fall only. But the tractors on its last legs, I think we go back to what we discovered, Don, a couple of years back, that delivery really impacts it. That if they wait till the annual to buy this, you've lost it for the year because you're not going to get it until the following winter, basically. Where if we buy it now, we'll have it in the spring. Remember the whole, what was it, the excavator? The fact, the rental cost would have paid for, you know, by saving the rental cost, you would have had the unit. So unfortunately, it does have a pretty hefty price for a tractor. My father would be shocked with these tractors with the attachments, it's a hundred thousand dollars.
How much?
Hundred thousand, maybe a little more. It was right around a hundred, maybe a one oh eight.
One oh eight, so did you turn with the little blue one with the sickle bar?
Right, and this is one now with a few more attachments. I think we've all seen how much that excavator has really helped out, you saw the flail on it to do the roadside mowing, et cetera. But they requested this and they would not, if they ordered it after the fall town meeting, they still wouldn't see it till sometime early spring. So if we waited till the annual town meeting, you wouldn't get it till the fall and you'd be renting something to use the entire year.
Is the, the one tractor now down, it's out?
Pretty much, from the town. And the sickle bar, gosh, I remember we had one up at the farm, you just can't, you don't see those anymore. Yeah. Brush truck, Don, you made a good point about this, that we need a hard number, do we have anything yet from them?
No, I did send off another message to the chief.
I got, I got another issue with this, the brush truck, and, and my issue is this, that the, we were told, you know, we got the grant in, in September twenty-two and we've been waiting for a firm number. And we were told that the, back in, I think, February, the chief was here with the, and they said that they would have a firm number for the town and that, and, and they came with a number, they came with a number which was ten thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollar town thing. During that period of time, there was never a discussion that they were looking at a more expensive truck, they wanted additions on it or anything else. Now, I'm not saying I'm against that, that they don't need it or anything else, but it stretches the credibility of the board, selectmen and the advisory committee and the fire department. When they go to the town and say, this is the number, ten thousand nine sixty-two, and five months later you're back saying, just kidding, we need another fifty thousand. I think that's a real problem. And I think that the town, I'm sure the town will vote for the thing because they love the fire department, but I think we really have to get a handle on some of these things because I can give you a whole list of emails and meetings where that number never changed. And the town meeting came, that was the number he gave the advisory committee, that was the number the advisory committee approved, that's the number the town meeting approved. And then three weeks later, we get an email saying, well, really it may be forty or fifty thousand dollars more. So that is a credibility problem as far as I'm concerned. Now, whether it goes on the warrant or not, well, the town will decide, but I think there'll be some issues raised about that.
Well, we're leaving it on the warrant.
Yeah, yeah, we are, we can leave it on the warrant, but, but it, and, and, and here we are again, where, you know, back in, I don't know, back in August, he was here. And, you know, he said they'll have a firm number. Well, here we are now, October, middle of September, August, October, we don't have a firm number and the town meeting is, you know, and I think it, it just, it's, it's a real credibility problem. And I, and I don't like the way it reflects on the board because it's like, we're hiding something. It's like the advisory committee is hiding something, and it's like the fire department is hiding something. And I, and I'm not saying it's not legitimate need or anything like that, but it's a problem.
I appreciate the work they do. I don't know if I would characterize it as they're hiding something, I appreciate the work.
I didn't say they were hiding something, I said it appears that they're hiding something.
Worst number was he looking at, the two seventy to two seventy-five, thirty cent?
Yeah, yeah, two seventy-five, but we still haven't got a number, so who knows what the number is?
Number August?
Yeah, they're here, the, the committee, what was it, Andrew and, yeah, Marcus.
But the point is, no one was ever told that there was a committee looking at enhancements to the truck. We went to the town meeting and we all stood up there and said it was ten thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars, what a great deal it was. And it's still a good deal. I mean, you know, you're buying a three hundred thousand dollar truck for sixty thousand, but that's not what the town was told, so. That's my speech on that one. Want to go on to the next one?
It was different than, we're putting addition on the highway department for three hundred, oops, it's six hundred, can go back, yeah, and we had to do that too.
Yeah, I know, but I don't want to go into it, but we didn't know there was a committee looking at enhancements. We were told it was ten thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars, that's what the town was told.
Well, you spelled the parking room also, Bob.
Want to go on to defibrillators?
I'm glad you pronounced it, thank you.
Question I have there is that the town meeting, we voted five thousand six hundred and eighty dollars to maintain them, now we're buying them.
That was the point I raised at the meeting with the chief. He said, how come, we just, we just sent in a contract and now you want to replace them? Well, the guy looked at them, they're shot. That's nice to know.
We have twelve and this is a request, there's going to be a request for nine new ones.
I think that.
How much is it?
That contract we signed was for the servicing contract, not for any parts and labor repairs or replacements. It's just a yearly cost to certify.
My question, how much is it? I don't have a number on it, okay?
Yeah, they were roughly.
So did, did they, if, if we spent the money in the maintenance, can we put the money towards buying the new ones? See, we don't have to maintain them, there'll be a warranty on them?
That was my question to him, right, have we already spent too much or is this the new service contract, renewals as well? Well, why wouldn't there be a warranty and you wouldn't need a contract? And why is there nine instead of twelve because three are fairly new?
It still needs to be yearly certified and that's part of the maintenance contract.
But it must be part of at least the one year, right?
Want to chat about the rifles?
I, I think you should take it off, I don't think we need, I, I, how much are the rifles?
Roughly a thousand bucks each.
Well, you know, we haven't shot one in four, fifty years, so I think I'm going, I think I go another six months.
It's not as much of emergency as you think.
No, yeah, no.
I, I was under the impression that there was pretty much a safety issue because then once they have, currently don't function properly. And if there's ever a need for them, they don't have them.
I probably would like to hear that more from the chief, I mean, all of them don't work, like, you know.
You need a rifle bang at any door in town.
If he wants to come in and explain about it.
They, they do fire them during training.
Right, yeah.
This is for six.
Yeah, is that the amount we have? It's one per car, basically?
Nine, is it for nine?
Originally it started, it was nine or ten originally.
Six, oh, okay.
Originally it was nine or ten.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's nine defibrillators.
Nine on twelve defibrillators.
Six rifles, twelve, yeah, six rifles.
How many cartridges? All right, Government Study Committee, who's the closest? I guess, Dick, are you on that committee? No, you're not.
No, no. They're just giving a report, right?
Report, they're not looking for anything at this point?
Far as I know, it's a so-called interim report. And that's about as much as I know about it.
Okay, then. We'll leave that on.
That's a good one. It's a zero.
In our budget?
No money.
In our budget, yeah, no money. Okay, now the four school requests. And I know there's been a lot of back and forth about this. My understanding is, we talked before that we, they originally had five last year, they came down to two. We said, okay, we would consider those two in the fall, let's not mess around with the school budget in the spring.
Because they're having enough trouble with that.
Exactly right. Then, of course, the other thing came up, the boiler being one of them. Why don't we make it two and two, the two we said we'd carry on, the two new ones? My understanding in talking to Michelle, they like that idea, but Wilbraham Finance said they wouldn't support it if it was two and two. And they wanted a menu of all four.
I did four in part because Wilbraham sent copies of the, of their four, so I thought we would match them.
And the, the school committee voted to do the four on September sixth.
Right, but again, this goes, and I've talked about this before. The school committee has the authority to put out whatever they want for a warrant, a, a request for a warrant. If they had wanted to, they could have gone two and two.
Yeah.
And, and the finance committee may not agree with it, but they still have been obligated to leave it on the warrant that way. They just may have voted non-recommendation or whatever.
Grouping the two and two would have made complete sense. Just based on what they are.
It would.
I mean, you, you got two that are in technology that should be covered in their budget normally, so that's an easy one.
My, my fear, and I think I said this before, when you go to a menu system and everybody agree, forty percent agree with each one, nobody gets anything. Although, I think the boiler probably would pass because what are you going to do, not, not run the thing? So, but that, it's, it's out of our hands. It's the school committee and Donna, you were probably at the meeting, you know, is how they vote. I just wish it, said to the finance committee, I'm sorry, this is how we'd like to do it. said to the finance committee, I'm sorry, this is how we'd like to do it and.
Wouldn't articles thirteen and fourteen be part of a stabilization, stabilization account funding? And that was the whole purpose of the stabilization account?
It was, but I think this, you know, I think the sudden failure probably was what, you know, it would drain the account if they had that amount of money. What was it? For the repair, it was on a one forty just for the boiler, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
The thing too with this though is Wilbraham is having their town meeting on October twenty-third.
A week before?
No, we're, we're waiting for it. So this may all be moot depending on what they vote because if either, if either town votes one, votes no, it's dead. So we may only have.
You may get your two questions anyway.
I do kind of agree with Craig. We talked before about, for instance, projectors and monitors, that why isn't this an annual thing? Like replacing computers in your budget?
Should be in their IT budget.
Right, right. Okay, and.
And the camera system too. What's the camera system? That's another IT thing, right?
It's a part of their capital plan, but every so years they should replace something and move on.
And they took the railing away, railing request.
The railing, they're doing something else, but they talked about that in detail too.
Right.
Thought that was a huge thing that had to get done right away.
And that's where I'm finding money, raise the parking fee. Okay, and the last two questions, tax rate and transfer general stabilization and all the assessors are not at the point to give us any kind of guidance right now. You know, they're still assessing new growth, things like that, so hopefully by beginning of October, we'll have a sense of where we are with that. I would think, do we, yeah, Don, do you have a, uh, in your head, a rough total what we're talking about here if we approve everything?
No, I don't, I don't.
I think the biggest thing is six hundred.
You didn't know the numbers.
No, I mean, a hundred for the tractor and what did you say? You're another forty or fifty possibly for the truck?
No truck, yeah, it's one fifty and then to get some small items, let's say it's twenty for all of those, one seventy, and this is.
I did see, I did see a breakdown of what the hand and share was. I don't recall what it was.
You remember the hand and share was of those four things?
I don't remember it, but I, I, I know that it has been broken. I've seen the numbers.
Yeah. And then, of course, it's kind of, I mean, the RFQ is kind of out there also.
Right, we know what that's going to do.
I would say, putting that aside, I think the other ones are going to total up into two, two fifty range between the tractor, the truck, potential school things, you know, our share, yeah. Which would leave, take your worst case, say you leave six hundred out of the nine hundred. You know, then it's our thought, where do we divide that? We're the advisory and the other people. I think we have some projects coming forward that would say we want a good savings account, even though we have a good savings account right now. Like you say, things coming down the road, that'd be nice to have some cash for.
Yeah, you're at about fourteen percent
Yeah.
Um, of your operating budget and the DOR only recommends ten percent or something.
Right. What we get into, what did we, if you look at the budget passed in the spring, what did it go up? Four percent?
I haven't even gotten that.
Right, we have one of those numbers yet.
Numbers yet to do it.
And you made the point before, look, people understand they raised the thing. They should reasonably expect it to go up one to two percent.
Yeah, but, you know.
And if we can offset some of that.
You're right, it's two percent.
Yeah.
But, um, and, and you're right, we're, we're over, stabilization is high, but we've got three major building renovations we're facing. You know, so be nice to have a little bit more of a down payment.
I'm going to say, so when we get the information from assessors of what their projections are.
I'm still working on that, but yeah.
Anybody else have any other questions about the warrant? So we're looking to officially close that on, is there anything, no, I said don't. So what do we say for a date? Uh, not this meeting, but October second. And then we'll get ready for posting after that.
Mrs. Glover's got a question, I think.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, I, I just, I just wanted to point out that historically, the spring town meeting has been the meeting which is the big, the, the, the full town meeting. And that the fall town meeting has been a special town meeting for extraneous issues and so forth and so on. This scene, we have seemed to have eroded that pattern in recent years. This certainly seems to have eroded that pattern, um, where we have. And my concern is that most people go to the spring, to the spring town meeting and not to the fall. So you have more people there. So you're passing things with a smaller percentage of the population of the voting population present for significant dollar figures and significant decision-making. Um, and I think it's, it's something that the town should make a decision on whether they want to do this. Whether they want this change to occur, once, whether they like this erosion of their authority. Um, so I just wanted to make that public and to say that I think that the people that I talk to don't, don't realize that there's, that this is the extent of what the fall town meeting will be. It's usually seven, eight items, I guess, from my memory, very few, um, certainly not eighteen or whatever's on there now, yeah, eighteen. And certainly not with this amount of money things back. So do you have, would you have any plans of going back to the old traditional?
Well, I think I have more experience with the old traditional than you have. But I would say that, I would say that the fall, I would say that the fall has, um, typically been for emergencies. And I think as we detailed here, I think you can make a case that most of these are emergencies, that certainly we didn't expect all four school things, but the town did make an agreement in the spring that we would defer the school things to the fall. The town did make an agreement in the spring that the reports, of which there are three on here, would be heard in the fall. The town did certainly expect that the fiber optic program would be brought back to the fall for a discussion. So to say that, I think some of these things were not in the light of day might not be as correct. You do make a good point that we don't want to get into the habit of putting things in the fall that would, that could easily be done in the spring. And I think that's like Don's point, do we really need those rifles now? Or can we wait till the spring appropriation?
I think you make a point too about the rifles, the defibrillators.
Right, we need to make it.
Brush thing.
Well, I think we make it.
And, and, and just even the deferring to the fall. I think if, if you can't make a decision in the spring, then unless it's an emergency item, I would see.
Well, I'm sure the school would like the boiler working for the, I'm sure the school would like to have the boiler working.
The, the one, the one exception to that is the, we have, when money has been tight, we have said, let's wait to see what free cash is. And maybe we can do that in the fall. So there are some things there that I could see that come under that. They said the tractor, there was really no way to anticipate the fact that you can't get parts anywhere for the darn thing. And he's spending.
Yeah, the cruiser was a typical one.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was a typical pattern. I mean, I'm uncomfortable with the master plan coming back after being defeated in the spring. Um, I'm uncomfortable with the fire truck being changed after a cer, after appropriation already. Those ones make me a little bit queasy, but.
It's up to those boards to sell it. It really is.
Well, this, the thing is they're selling it to fifty-five people instead of two hundred and fifty people. And it's easy, to, to, to Mrs. Cawber's point, it's much easier to pack the room in a fall.
Can you come?
I said, I see the points. I mean, I think.
Which side do you want me to argue?
I think it goes both ways, pros and cons on either side. I mean, you know, the, the touch base on the fiber one, I mean, that's the one that I've been trying to give as much information as I can the last two and a half years with anticipation that it was going to come back in the fall because poll petitions that we did are only good for so long. Um, and once those poll petitions run out, that that, that, that venue there goes away. We have to redo it all over again. Uh, but as far as the other ones go, I'm like, I'm, now I'm questioning, you know, do we, do we do the rifles? Do we do the defibrillators? Do we, do we, you know, do the fire truck? Do we do the, um, master plan? Do we do all those other things? You know, I mean, a couple of those things are going to have some high dollars on them, you know?
But again, if you bring it back to the spring, as Dick said, there's an opportunity to use free cash where if we do it in the spring, it's typically a raise and appropriate. Which again, you can offset in the following fall, but then you kick it down the road more, right?
Because you can let some cap, you can let some free cash roll forward to the spring and spend it in the spring, you know?
So then you don't use it against the tax rate, then it sits there, you know, without a purpose, yeah.
On the rifles? The.
What, what, by, what are they using? The five point five six millimeter?
On, on the rifles, didn't we at one time use the, uh, what they call off-duty pay to pay for a track, for a police car? You know, the, the detail money?
The administrative, uh, money that we get when they do details. It's actually, it actually is the capital, it is actually the, the off-duty account that they use to pay the, the police officers, right? Apparently there's a profit margin in there and occasionally it builds up.
We use some of that for one, at purpose.
So, yeah.
Buy a, buy a cruiser.
Put a paper half cruiser out of it, but, yeah.
Well, put the pay for the rifles out of it.
See if it's built back up, you know?
Yeah, I don't know how much is in and out.
Conversation with the chief.
Well, certainly, one of the reasons that this, this warrant builds is differring up, differring decisions. Because several of the, like you said, fiber optics, and so you would anticipate that that's going to come forward. I mean, I think that that's logical and that's, you know, I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem with eighteen money items. Or, or if there's eighteen, there's sixteen money items and two not money items. For fifty people to decide instead of three hundred.
Thank you. Dick?
Hi.
Hi.
Are you done with that discussion?
Yes, we're done with this.
Excellent. So, um, thanks to the law changing in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, with regard to storage of documents for the, for the towns, and thanks to Bob, um, um, shepherding this Laserfish online storage, cloud storage system. Uh, our department has been looking at ways that we can minimize use of paper and the storage involved in it and possibly streamline our systems a little bit. And it's going to take a while for different departments to ramp up, but the one thing that we do exclusively is on the payroll side, we generate a lot of paper. Currently now we, uh, the payroll's inputted online, uh, transmitted on Monday morning. A courier brings a bag of checks and reports to us on Tuesday from North Hampton. Uh, if it's a holiday week, sometimes it's four o'clock on Wednesday for a Thursday payday. And, um, you know, we have reams of paper that we have to store. So we were looking, uh, we've been investigating the possibility of doing this paperless. That the reports themselves would actually come, download as a PDF and go directly to the, uh, directly to the servers. Um, there's only a couple of pages we'd have to print out as backups for different, for, for different payments. But, and that would eliminate that part of it. But the other thing that's in the bundle that we're paying a courier for every week is the actual pay stubs. And the vast majority of our employees are on, um, on direct deposit, but they still get a paper. This is not a check with, you know, uh, every single week. And some of those are distributed in the building and through the departments and a number of them have to be mailed out every week at sixty-something cents a piece or whatever they are. So, um, there is an alternative where we can give everyone a portal. Every active employee would have a portal where they could log in and see their own pay history. And they could look up every week's check and see what the deductions are rather than have this piece of paper. Um, and there's a small cost to it. It's fifty cents per active employee per month. Right now I got about a hundred and fourteen active employees. Um, but that is offset by the eleven dollars a week I'm paying for the courier service. Not to mention the postage bill for the, the ones that we're mailing out. So in order to go forward with this plan, uh, we would need somebody, I assume it would be the board of selectmen, to authorize just the, uh, stopping distribution, distribution of paper pay stubs. And, um, in its place, the employee portal. The other two things that I'd like to see, that I would like to see, that would, I would need that in order to be able to do this plan. I'd also like to consider the possibility of requiring people to use direct deposit rather than making it optional. And the third thing is in the police contract, which I think you're going to be starting to negotiate this winter, there's a couple of cases where they require paper checks, like longevity payments. I happen to have the union rep in for another thing, and I mentioned this to him, but he didn't think it was a big deal. You know, it would be pretty easy during a contract renewal to consider it. So the three things I'm asking are to endorse the change of replacing paper pay stubs with portal access. And I'm asking the selectmen to also consider requiring all employees to sign up for a deposit and attempt to remove language from the police contract requiring paper checks. Right now, their paper checks go to mostly part-time seasonal people. Um, there's some of the park, some of the park and rec kids never get around to signing up for rec deposit. There's some of the firemen who never bother to. And they're all labor intensive because there's small checks that they sometimes never cash and I have to chase them. I also have three department heads who get part of their pay in a paper check every week. You know, or a pay period, which just surprises the economy, you know, but questions?
Bobby, think this is something you can cover at the next staff meeting?
Yes.
I have no problem with direct deposit. We mandated that at our office also and it went through. I think you make a good point with the part-time people, the kids, you know, hopefully they all have a bank account.
Yeah. This system, the way the system would work, instead of them printing all the checks in North Hampton and sending them down here, we have the, we will have the ability to print the few checks that we have to print in-house. Uh, they're going to get ordered different check stock and all that, but with a different account. There's like three agency checks, deferred compensation, older accounts that I have to do, that I have to do live checks for. And of course, every new employee who does a direct deposit, there's two weeks that they get live checks anyway while they test the system. So we'll never eliminate it totally, but if, you know, if I could get it from fifteen to the six, I'd be a lot happier guy.
So it's fifty cents per person, per user?
Fifty percent per active employee per month.
And you said it's a hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fourteen last I checked. And if I'm a little more aggressive on, when the summer camp comes, getting those counselors into the leave of absence column, you know, I can probably drop that a little bit. But we're paying for, you know, uh, uh, forty-four dollars a month, well, a little more because thirteen pay periods for courier service. That covers almost all of it. So I probably don't need any more money to run the system. And then again, we'll be saving some on the postage side too, because there's twenty or twenty-five of those that have to get mailed.
Have you talked to anybody in the town hall about this that you think that has?
A few random people and everybody went, guess so. Oh, I could do it on my phone. I don't have to carry the paper.
I mean, I'm all in on this because the last place I worked, we had everyone's required direct deposit. And you had the portal and you could go in there anytime, day or night, two o'clock in the morning, see how much vacation time, what your sick days were, what your taxes were, what your.
You're not going to get your vacation time sadly, but because our, now it's a whole other story.
Could that be rolled into it eventually?
Now without changing the way that we accrue it because.
But it's printed on the check now.
No, it's not. It is not. Because.
Well, if their Pam's here today, it was sick and.
Oh, she was part of that test thing that we did, back when Mary was here. She tried to put it together. The problem is vacation days are, are accrued by day, not hour. And the relationship between the day and how many hours you work, the only way to program in the system is, you know, with so, every so many hours you earn X. And that doesn't work because she's on a three-day week and you're on a four-day week and they're on a five-day week and it's, yeah.
The only accruals are what they did. I'll say it's big Y. What they did was they, at the beginning of the year, they gave everybody, depending on your longevity, in, in my case, I had seven weeks. So they would give me two hundred and eighty hours and you use them any way you want. And they just deduct them, you know, if you took a half a day off, they take off four hours, sick time.
Did they roll it all or use them?
Uh, they, they, you had to use half of them. You had to use half of them during the year and you could keep half of them and they'd pay you at the end of the year.
But remember. Was it six months to, like stop and shop was the same way where you had to use so many first half the year, so many second half the year?
Then when there was left over, you could, they'd pay you.
Actually, I misspoke. We accrue vacations in weeks. But what, but that's five days for them, you know, for five days for them and, and it's four days for most people in the year. So there's, I mean, I, I think there's some people with benefits who work three, you know, so it, I, we tried to figure it out. Mary just threw up her hands and we walked away from it.
I know that some places, like you say, you know, they accrue them at hours, somewhere he works the same time.
And that's what it would take to do it, but it would take a change in policy. The math is there. Math is easy.
I'm fine with it. How about the two-week pay period we talked about one time?
So last time I looked at that, looking at what it would save for. So, last time I looked at that, looking at what it would save for labor in the accountant's office, what it would save for labor in my office, what it would save for the processing fees and all that, probably between four and five thousand dollars a year, that would save the town on a one point three million dollar payroll. What I don't know is how many employees it would affect poorly. I take my check every month, so it does, I, I'm not a good gauge here. But I don't know how many people it would have a negative effect on, so that's what, the, the savings are there.
Yeah.
It's just a question, you got to find out if it would make it a less friendly workplace enough that it wouldn't be worth the five grand. I don't know.
I have people that are week to week, I know what you mean.
Yeah. If that check's a day late, I can't go get milk.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Electrons. Do we need, what do we need to do here?
We need to give them the direction to start.
Give them the blessing?
Well, I would say I'd definitely need a vote to endorse the, the, the paper pay, the, eliminating paper pay stubs and going to portal access. If you want to take a vote on the direct deposit, to require employees direct deposit, I'll take it, but it's up to you.
When do you want to start that first of the year, or start at the FCP?
It's going to take, I'm, my goal would be, if everything goes well, to be fully implemented first of the year. You know, to try to not have papers show up.
Right, I was just thinking of the requirement to go direct deposit only. And you want to give some people the time just to get it out there, notifications, first of the year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, the only one, does the basketball start after the first? I mean, you've got kids that are like, going to be paid one way or the other.
Yeah, I think they, they start, don't worry about it, don't worry about it.
I mean, the direct deposit, direct deposit is strong with me, I think that's the way to go, right? And then the other part, the portal, you're making it better to people, get more access to information.
Yeah, and I mean, it's going to mean that we're going to have to reach out to every one of these people and get their account set up.
Okay.
Give yourself.
Something to do, except you're going on vacation.
Well, I'm, I'm going to miss five days of work, it's not that bad.
Do we want to take action on this tonight?
I would.
I would.
Good, then we'll have the direction to go. Oh, you want that piece of paper?
Just to read how you wrote it, so.
Just what, all I did was print out the email and say, so. The larger type lines are the three lines that I'm looking for, but the third one, you probably don't have a bunch of.
Am I good? Is that how that works?
Yeah, you'll find out your arm is, is not long enough eventually.
We can mandate for action on the phone, do you want me to use that?
I would move that the board endorse the treasurer's recommendations of replacing paper pay stubs with portal access. Direct deposit starting mandatory first of the year, and then we'll cross the other ones to the police contract.
Check it.
On favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Who said we can't all agree on things?
Somebody online.
Anything else, why you have me?
Enjoy your vacation.
Thank you.
Are you going away?
Jason?
I am going to Virginia International, where I've got a week of driving the pace car for the national championship. Yeah, so last, last weekend was Watkins Glen, I was racing, I got a third and a fourth, by the way.
Nice, senior division? Senior division?
No, but I, I'm the old guy in that, in that group, but there were only six cars in my class.
Do you run automatics now, or are you still running clutches?
Any word from Cliff, how's he doing?
I haven't talked to him in a week. Yeah, so it's, you know, we deal with it, so.
Okay.
All right.
Great.
Thanks, Eric.
Administrator report, anything?
Yes.
We did, I, I mentioned earlier, I'm sure you're aware, that the Tiger case was in Palmer District Court today. We expect the magistrate to issue a decision in a few days, so. We had a meeting on the twelfth of September to review the updated comprehensive emergency management plan. And we met with the regional MEMA representative, who had some interesting things to say. The ERC five, the East of the River five communities that are part of that Chamber of Commerce group, met in town at the food mart on the twelfth. And as you, John was there, and they asked me to bring greetings from the town, which I did. Updated the STM warrant, new administrative assistant is on board. And the job description and for the health and operations coordinator, that's Jane, is distributed to you. And have a look at it, and I'll put it on the agenda for next week if you're agreeable to it. I think it's, it's pretty well done right now, but then we'll send it out and start advertising. I am very disappointed that our ad for a conservation agent and stormwater management brought no applications despite posting it on the Mass Association of Conservation Commission website, as well as the Mass Municipal Association.
Is there anything in the, we talked about this report, do any of the local universities have a program where, you know, UMass or something, what was it, Stockbridge, basically to the agricultural part?
Well, I'll have to check into that, because this is very frustrating, and the Conservation Commission really needs assistance. And as we all know, the stormwater program needs good management. So what I did was, I just modified the website and said, available, the, the ad is, I'm going to keep the ad on the town website until filled. But I keep an eye on the Mass Municipal Association website, there have been three or four ads for a conservation agent recently, and they're just not available. In spite of the fact that I think, in combination with the town of Granby, we were going to offer a very good salary.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's the report.
That's the good news, okay, any committee, what's up with planning?
Planning committee is meeting on the twenty-sixth, I sent you kind of a draft of some of what they thought would be the cost of moving things around, whatever, and is to be discussed in detail on the twenty-sixth.
Did you, I know I sent a reply back, and I know we're going to close the comment on it, but.
Yeah, I saw that.
Did you see there was one missing from there?
Yeah, there is one, I, I took, I'll get it to you.
I just want to make sure it wasn't left off and that you were aware of it too.
Yeah, I know, I just.
Okay, okay, that's, that's perfectly fine, I didn't know if it came from somebody and you.
No, I have.
I was with Bob, we went to the emergency management meeting as Board of Health Chair. Scott Trombley did send out an Excel spreadsheet with data points on it. Everybody's surely got it, if you want to fill it out, or you want me to just kind of fill it out as Board of Health Chair, that's fine, I can do that. He wants to get all this stuff together for the, the SEM plan and then come back, hopefully in a couple of months, with it finalized, completed with everything that the, the MEMA rep had recommended.
Sounds good.
And then Brian Ash's office reached out to Jane about wanting to use Thornton Burgess as a hub for recycling day. Would be on October seventh, it'd be no cost to us, unless residents are dropping stuff off, then there's a cost to getting rid of like certain electronic items. But they want to host it, they're going to do all the legwork, pay for all the, the companies, everything like that. They just wanted permission to use TWV, so, I think that would be a great thing if everybody's okay with that.
October seventh?
Uh, yeah, ten.
Do we, do they, do we give that permission, or does the school, do we have to?
Well, it's a non-school day, so yes, yeah, and check with parks and make sure there's.
Right. Maybe from ten to two is what they want to run.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so I did, great, if they want to host a community event, you know, they're going to take care of all the flyers, signage, promotions.
I have an old coffee maker I can bring, that'd be good.
Yeah, yeah. If you want to get rid of furniture, you know, you get rid of stuff on there.
What do they get, what are we getting rid of?
Tag sale on every street.
Computers, monitors, refrigerators, mini fridges, car batteries, cell phones.
If the, the computer, power backup things, that's the big thing right there, people just want, you know, they're responsible, they don't want to throw them on the landfill, I appreciate that.
Oh, you're talking about the, the storages?
That's an APC battery backup, stuff like that.
Yeah, it's different fees, you know, twenty bucks for a TV, twenty bucks for a refrigerator, five dollars a car battery, air conditioners, five dollars.
All the TVs same price, some spare LCVs and.
How about TVs and monitors, that's twenty bucks?
How about empty pro bait, baiting tanks?
I think that's going to be, fall under hazardous waste, so this is not a hazardous waste, this is more electronics and.
I think though, you can bring that to Rocky, it's like five dollars.
Yeah, usually they say, oh, you're close to your date, you want to buy a new one, and like, oh, yeah, here, take this one, buy a new one, buy a new Rhino.
Sure.
But I was talking to Jane about that, I guess in the past, we have done hazardous waste days in town, there's a, there's a cost to that.
There is.
So, I don't know if it'd be beneficial, even if there was, you know, something.
It was pretty well received, as I said at the regional meeting, Arlene Miller was the lady who ran that, you recall Minichaw at one time? Maybe Islam, oh, at the fire station, Islam metal, people loved it, they had paint cans, turpentine, you know?
Yeah, it was something I want, I want to kick around for the spring.
Yeah.
Maybe about a huge service.
Wasn't much, it was like, we'd charge a carload basically, right?
Right.
Yeah. And whatever you had in the trunk.
Right.
Oh, yeah. Mystery stuff, here's a jar of something.
It's been in my basement for twenty years.
And you bought the house, it was in the garage.
And it's there when you're selling.
Exactly.
When I bought my house.
My grandfather left this to me.
Twenty gallons of paint when I bought my house. You want it, for each of the rooms, you know, the different trims and colors, and, you know, drawer colors and like.
Were they oil?
Uh, no, latex.
Oh, latex, I mean, that's kitty right there.
Still.
No, I would, yeah, keep following on that, like I said, we brought it up at the regional meeting.
Yeah, they brought it up.
Definitely needed. Okay, anything else? Lauren, you still with us?
I am.
Not leaving?
I'm here.
Okay.
Stimulating discussion.
Yeah, right.
Motion to adjourn?
What? Oh, motion adjourned.
Wow.
Second?
You guys are. Having the synchronization, I expect here, any discussion, on favor?